Okay, we'll now call to order the February 15, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Gower, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation of their own, with its justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Michelle, will you please do a roll call?
J.D. Draculich.
Here.
Harris Armstrong.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Arthur Munoz.
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva.
Here.
Alex Felto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We'll now open up public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, do you have anything to read into the record or request to speak forums?
Yes, thank you. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matters not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Mornings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. I have not received any request to speak forums for this item. We did receive correspondence, general in nature, but I believe they're for a future agenda item. So that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and has been entered into the record. And I don't believe we have anybody on Zoom that would like to speak during this item either.
Great, thank you. Would anyone in the public like to speak for general public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Move to agenda item number four, which is approval of the minutes. 4.1 is for the Reno City Planning Commission regular agenda for January, the minutes for the January 4th, 2023 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Villanueva will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Great, we have a motion from Commissioner Villanueva. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Gower, a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Draculich, I was not present, will be abstaining from that.
Great, thank you. We'll move to agenda item, the next agenda item, which is approval of the January 18th, 2023 minutes. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Villanueva, I'll motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Wait, I'm sorry. Can you speak into the micro? I can't hear you at all.
Oh, is this not, it's on red, so.
Okay.
Are you not able to?
Can you pull it closer to you? Because I can't hear you at all.
Hello, hello? Can you hear this? Commissioner Villanueva, I motion to, I vote to approve the, I motion to approve the minutes. Excuse me.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Commissioner Gower, oh, go ahead.
No, no, you got it.
Mr. Munoz, a second.
Sneaking in there, I like it. Motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, carries unanimously. We'll move to agenda item number five, which is the Regional Transportation Commission in Nevada Department of Transportation presentation on North Valleys projects. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Xuan Wang, Senior Technical Planner with RTC Washoe. Today, we are going to give a presentation on the projects in the North Valleys. I will start by giving an overview of the planning process for the RTC and then my coworker, Jeff Wilberich, will talk about the engineering project. Next slide. So the North Valleys Planning Study was completed in 2017. This study was to look into, next slide. This study was to look into the regional roads in the North Valleys as well as major intersections and the two interchanges, the Lemon Drive interchange and the Park Boulevard interchange. At the time, NDOT was doing a freeway study, so they covered the freeways and the rest of the interchanges. The purpose of the study is to, was to address safety issues, to improve high crash intersections, and also pedestrian crossing improvements. It also looked into the congestions in the North Valleys to improve operations at the intersections and also expand roadway capacities to accommodate the future growth. They also looked at multi-model infrastructure to provide connectivity for bicycles and pedestrians. As I said, we coordinated with NDOT's freeway study to make sure we share information and data and the two projects are well communicated. Through this study, we resulted a list of projects for the North Valleys for both short-term and long-terms. And the short-term projects recommendations, those were already completed and Jeff will talk about those in a little bit. And the long-term projects were also folded into the RTP. So the study report is available on the RTC website. So the RTP Regional Transportation Plan is a long-term transportation plan, which is updated every four years. It includes all the projects and programs for transportation improvements in the region. The projects in this plan are, were developed through different methods. So for every four years, when we updated the plan, obviously, the previous plan serves as a very good foundation. So we evaluate and update the projects in the previous plan. And also during the four years, the RTC conducts planning studies and various different studies. And the results from these studies also serve as an important source for the projects in the RTP. And during the RTP update, the RTC hosts various venues for the public and our partner agencies to provide input and recommendations for the projects. And those are also a good source for the project's development. And all these projects are analyzed using the RTC's travel demand model. The TMRPA provides land use forecast and projections, which serve as an important input for the travel demand model. So they use existing zoning and the consensus forecast as a basis to develop the future land use forecast. And the RTC's travel demand model uses that information to predict the future traffic growth. So these projects are evaluated and prioritized based on different factors such as congestion, safety, equity, multi-model, and so on. And these projects are divided into three timeframes. The first five years are from the 2021 to 2025, and Jeff will later cover these projects in this timeframe. And in the second five years, we also have additional capacity and multi-model projects, as you can see on the map. And the 20-year, the odd years, the 20-year from 2031 to 2050, there are additional projects. But since these projects are a little further into the future, so as we get closer to that timeframe, this project, we will have additional details, information. They are subjected to change and updates. So that was kind of an overview of the planning process. And on a regular basis, we also work closely with the city of Reno on the development reviews. So when the development applications come through, the RTC work closely with the city to provide any input to see if this project is, has any impact on the future developments, future improvements from in the RTP and to check if there, if our planning assumptions match well and if there are any differences. So we work with the city and to develop input to request accommodations if there are any future developments, future improvements on the regional roads. And on the transit side, if the development is close to a transit line or is adjacent to a bus stop, we look for opportunities for the developers to improve the bus stops. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and he will talk a little more about the development review and the engineering projects.
Thank you. Yeah, so, good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Wilberich, I'm Engineering Manager at RTC. And just to kind of echo on what Shwin was talking about, you know, I guess we were here kind of to talk specifically about the North Valleys, but we do look at things from a regional level. So we're the RTC, we look at the MPO, we're doing this metropolitan planning, we provide the transit service, and then we also implement a street and highway program that maintains and works on regional roads. And so to kind of backpack on what Shwin was talking about in the development review, we look at it in a long series of things, from the planning level that Shwin talked about, and then down into the actual engineering analysis that would go into a planning proposal to the city. We coordinate heavily with the city of Reno staff, mostly in public works, regarding what that traffic impact statement would be. So we go through a series of checklist. You know, we look at the functional class of roadway as RTC, we look primarily at regional roads, right? So how that development would impact a regional road? What's its functional class? Is it arterial? Is it a collector-type street? What, how does that play into the travel demand model that Shwin was talking about earlier? Are there any adjacent or nearby RTP projects that this development would impact? Or do we need to coordinate further to kind of understand what those implications would be? Similarly, with the RIF CIP, I can talk about that a little bit later. There's a regional road impact fee system that the city of Reno, Sparks, Washoe County are all part of, and RTC implements that program. So that program has a CIP, which is actually the 10-year window of potential projects that would be RIF eligible. If there's any planning studies, Bike Ped Master Plan, we're also working on an active transportation plan that's furthering those bicycles and pedestrians multimodal activity. And then we really, like I said earlier, dive in heavily to the traffic impact statement of what that, that development, based on how big it is, how the traffic impacts and congestion or anything associated with it would play into the regional road network? And what recommendations are in there? If they are consistent with our assumptions, if we, as traffic engineers, concur or disagree, we also provide those comments to the city of Reno along with our recommendations. I will also quickly talk about the RIF program, maybe at the end. I'll kind of continue through these slides. And if you have questions, we're happy to answer those at the end. So to talk about, you know, projects, and so Shwin commented earlier, we've been looking at the North Valleys for quite some time. We did a much more in-depth study back in 2017, and out of that came a lot of short-term projects and long-term projects that were then all folded into our larger RTP program. Several of those short-term projects have already been complete. I didn't even list them here because they were completed in 2016, 2017 timeframe. But to quickly talk through some of the more recently completed projects, we recently completed the Lemon Drive Segment One project, which included a widening and a diverging diamond at the 395 interchange. That was approximately a $15 million investment that was completed last fall. We installed a signal at the Beckworth-Golden Valley intersection. That was about a $1.1 million project that was also completed kind of early 2022 timeframe. We completed a Golden Valley road rehabilitation that's out of our pavement preservation program in looking at roads and how we can keep them good, maintain asphalt, maintain quality of our roadway network. We, this North Valleys, or North Virginia Street, sorry, Panther Drive, that's actually the third project that came out of that short-term plan of the North Valleys multimodal study that Shwin was talking about earlier. We completed two other projects that were kind of scattered about. There were a lot of pedestrian and safety improvements associated with those projects. And then the Newport Lane rehabilitation was also completed, actually, I think, end of, or beginning of 2022 is when that one was completed. We also have projects currently underway. So the biggest one we have in this area is Sky Vista Parkway. This is a regionally RIF-funded project, so I'll talk about the RIF funds later. But this is a widening project, increasing the capacity of Sky Vista Parkway. We're widening it from one lane in each direction to two lanes. It's going to have a center turn lane. There's eight-foot sidewalks on the other side, has streetlights. There's going to be a roundabout at Silver Lake Road. That project's slotted to be complete towards the end of this calendar year. And it's about an $18.3 million investment into the North Valleys. And then we have a lot of work on our plate coming up. And so out of the RTP and the planning process, we've identified a lot of capacity improvements that we're currently working on. The more near-term ones that we're starting up are Military Road, and that's a capacity project from Lemon Drive, all about to Echo. It's a capacity project, we, in the RTP, is listed as going from one lane in each direction to two lanes in each direction. With any project, we get very project-specific is how I like to say it. So we get in and we do the traffic analysis to validate all the assumptions that are in the RTP, so that when we go build a project, it is fulfilling the goals and priorities that are set forth. That project's also going to include, most likely, a shared-use path or some sort of multi-use path that would facilitate alternative modes of travel in that area as well. The North Valleys has a great kind of existing network of shared-use paths that we want to continue to make sure are safe and functional. There's a Buck Drive-North Hills Boulevard intersection project that's going to get started up. That has a construction timeframe about 2025, most likely. It's also going to include some access control along Buck Drive. There's Lemon Drive Segment Two, which we're currently going out with an RFP. We're looking to use federal funds. So that's going to go through a NEPA environmental process to advance that project, but we're starting design currently. And then we're also starting up the preliminary work with the North Virginia Street capacity project, which goes essentially from Panther Drive out towards Stead Boulevard. And that's also a capacity project, which would most likely be widening from one lane in each direction to two lanes in each direction. We invited our friends from NDOT. Hey, here's Pedro. Can I hand it off to you, Brooke Pedro?
Sure.
All right. And then I'll do it.
Good evening, for the record. Pedro Rodriguez, the Assistant Chief of Project Management with the Nevada Department of Transportation. How are you? So I'll talk briefly about what you see up there. So we have, the department's been working on a few projects up here in northern Nevada. The US 395 North Valleys project was broken up into two phases. The first phase was broken up into two more phases. The Phase One was from McCarran all the way to Golden, and due to the need to replace the Par Bridge, we broke out of Phase 1A. The Phase 1A Par Bridge replacement was completed in 2022, and we are now proceeding into completing the rest of Phase 1A, which is 1B. Same limits, McCarran to Golden. We expect that we're going to go into construction for this one this season. We're on track. And the second phase, US 395 North Valleys Phase Two, is actually going to be a combination of a few things. The limits for the 395 widening portion is going to go from Golden to Stead. And the improvements that we will be doing in that area will be south of Lemon. We're going to continue the improvements from Phase One, which will be adding an auxiliary lane on each side, and then continuing the general purpose through lane southbound. And north of Lemon, we're going to add two through lanes or two general purpose lanes all the way to Stead. So that's one component of the Phase Two project. In working with RTC, the department and the RTC want to grant to do more improvements for this project, and we'll be including the North Virginia Complete Streets projects. And in addition to those two, we will also be doing pavement preservation project from Stead to Cold Springs. Set.
Thanks, Pedro. Jeff Wilberich again from RTC. The other thing I wanted to talk about after talking with Jason is just the Regional Road Impact Fee Program. So RTC, as the MPO and kind of what we do, we primarily talk about fuel tax, and that's the primary funding source for a lot of the RTC projects. We also receive Regional Road Impact Fees that are collected by the local jurisdictions. And those, the Regional Road Impact Fee Program, it's a funding tool to collect costs of building appropriate capacity needs on regional roads due to new development. So it's specifically associated with when a new development comes in, they pay this fee, it goes into a pool that then is paid for capacity needs on the regional road network that would offset the impacts of that development. It has a lot of advantages and a couple of limitations. The biggest advantage is it allows development to pay their fair share of their impact. It's viewed as an equitable system and supported by, you know, the community. It does have limitations. Those funds that we collect cannot be used for operational costs or maintenance of the road, and they cannot be used for non-capacity improvements. So when we talk about a multimodal project or, you know, these other projects that RTC implements, like a pavement preservation program, it cannot be used for those types of projects. The, the RIF program is a really, it follows the RTP. So the RTP identifies a series of projects that would be warranted based on land use assumptions, based on if a development were to go online, how that increased capacity would drive the need for increased, you know, roadway capacity. And so we kind of back calculate all these potential development-driven projects to collect what that ultimate dollar value would be. We kind of compare that to the vehicle miles traveled that would be generated with that new development and develop a fee system based on vehicle miles traveled, a dollar value per vehicle mile traveled. And vehicle, and another way to kind of think about it is, you know, a single-family residence has a certain vehicle mile traveled associated with it. A warehouse, based on the square footage, is going to generate a certain number of vehicle miles traveled associated with that size of project. Versus daycare, which, you know, isn't really generated as much, because those, typically those trips are a through trip, like adult or a parent is going to go drop their kid off at a daycare and then go to their job. And so we use this BMT system to allocate what those fees would be. I think of any other noteworthy things. For our area, the, we separate it into service areas, so we have a north service area and a south service area, and that, the dividing line is I-80. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think we're all available for questions if you guys had specific questions that you wanted more information on.
Great, thank you so much. I imagine we do have some questions. Commissioner Munoz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm curious of what triggers a reevaluation of an area. So I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard that every four years, there's, an area is examined, which happened in 2017. We're now in 2023, and so we're a couple of years behind there. What's going to trigger for, we'll say generally, the Lemon, Lemon and Military, that area? What would trigger a new?
A specific area corridor level planning study is typically based on public input or other agent, our partner agencies make a request. We would do a study like the 2017 North Valley Study. And the Regional Transportation Plan, that long-range planning document, that is updated every four years. So after the 2017 study, our current 2050 RTP is, was actually approved in 2021. So our next update would be in 2025. So, and also takes time as for the updating process. We're actually going to start the update process in the next fiscal year. We're getting ready to do a household travel survey to look into how our residents are traveling in the region on a typical weekday basis, and then use that data to recalibrate the regional travel demand model, get the latest land use forecast from the Trucking Meadows Planning Agency, the TMRPA, and then use those, the latest information to develop the next RTP. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. My, my concern is with 2017 being the last study, in that, I'm speaking of this area generally. The boom, for lack of a better word, happened in 2018 and has gone full-tilt today, still today, it's still going. Has there been any input from the public or anything that has triggered a new, a new examination of the area? Is that in the works that you know of?
We don't have a plan to do a study in the same scale as the 2017 study, but during the RTP update, we do look at, look into the North Valleys area and see if there are any additional projects we want to put in the plan. So as you can see, we have many projects in the North Valleys area for the three timeframes. And a lot of these projects are, in addition to the projects recommended from the 2017 study.
Okay. One last thing, and this is going to be for anybody watching, for the, for the public that would like to basically put this, this area or any area they have concern in Reno on notice for you. How would they go about and make that happen? What's the easiest way for them to do that?
You mean for a full planning study in the North Valleys?
Yeah, you said that you needed to be noticed, or there's got to be either the public reaching out or the, the different entities that you work with. So save, just in general, for the public, in order to make a request, where and how do they do that?
We have different venues, like our advisory committees. We have a citizens' multi-model, multi-model advisory committee and our technical advisory committee, and also our board meetings. The public can definitely comment during these meetings and get their voice heard.
And the dates for these can be found online?
Yes.
At the RTC?
Our information is available on RTC.com, RTCWashoe.com.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I would just add to one of your other questions. And so the 2017 study was kind of a kickstart, I think, in, prior to the boom for sure, in the North Valleys area. And all the data that was collected then went into the next iteration of the RTP, but every iteration of the RTP takes a look at land use forecasting, developments, all these types of things that would then go into the project development list that you see on the screen now. And so while I totally and completely understand the significance of, you know, the development that's been going on in the North Valleys, I do believe that the timing that the last RTP was produced, it did account, it was in the, in the context after or in conjunction with that 2018 date that you did indicate, so.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to add to, to what Commissioner Munoz had, I had a couple of questions. So you mentioned that to get some of those studies performed, it would happen through the community working groups. And I'm looking here at the Reno Plan, it says you have the RTC Technical Advisory Committee, you have the Inter-County Working Group, RTC Citizens Multi-Module Advisory Committee. So you have several of these committees, but what exactly is the process? So you have these committees. Do you just give public comment? Does the chair of that committee have to do something? What, what's the steps? If, you know, explain to me, like, I'm a fourth grader and I don't understand, and what is the very basic process for that?
So once we hear these comments from the public, we definitely would evaluate internally and talk with our regional partners and look at the priority and the funding availability. And if it's a really urgent need, we definitely consider these projects.
Okay, so it's an internal process?
I would add that, so we do report to a board. The board includes two members of the city, Reno City Council, a member from City of Sparks, and two members from Washoe County.
Which board is that?
That's the Regional Transportation Commission Board.
Okay. I see that on here, yep.
And so I do know that every year, every couple of years, you go through a WP, what's your acronym for?
UPWP.
Yeah, UPWP. Maybe we could talk about that process?
Yeah. So every, every two years, we also prepare a UPWP report to locate the budget for different planning studies.
UPWT, what's that stand for?
UPWP, Unified Work, Planning.
Unified Work?
Yeah.
Unified Work?
Unified.
Unified Planning Work Plan?
Yeah.
UP, what's the P stand for? Unified Planning?
Unified Planning. Unified Planning Work Plan, yeah.
Work Plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's done every two years?
Yeah.
Okay.
So right now, we are actually in the process of developing that plan. So we have some project lined up for the next fiscal year, and we just had a...
Sorry, I don't mean to keep interrupting you, but it just, I'm trying to understand. So you're in the process, so as you're in the process, you're currently taking input? Or have you already taken input from the community organizations?
We're currently taking input.
You're currently taking input, okay. And how does that work? How do you take input?
So actually, the, the, I think in the February advisor committee meetings, the citizens multi-modal advisor committee and the technical advisory committee received a presentation to notify we started this process and we're developing a draft for the UPWP to kind of program a budget to include the different planning studies in this plan, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's still ongoing, so we're taking inputs from the public and also our partner agencies. So if there are any recommendations and suggestions, please let us know, we'll definitely consider.
And then that goes internally and then internally you all decide from there?
Yeah, it also goes to our board.
To RTC Commission?
Yeah, to the RTC board, and eventually the board will approve the, the, the final report.
Okay, thank you.
I had a last slide with all of our contact information. And yeah, so again, Jeff Wilbrecht, RTC. So on the slide here is all of our contact information, and if you have more questions or concerns, we're happy to answer those. We also do have a website for the North Valleys Improvements that includes all the projects and all the things that have been going on from the RTC side in that area. That is a good resource to kind of look at the, what's been completed and then the moving forward plans.
Chair, may I ask one more question? Can you remind me of your names? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
My name's Jeff Wilbrecht, and this is Shweng Wong.
Oh, okay, so Jeff and, okay, God, Shwang, is that correct? Shwang, Shwang? Okay, great. The, so the regional road impact fee, you discussed that. How often is that paid by development? Is that just like a one-time thing? And is that reduced by credits and some type of credits that they receive?
Sure. So the regional road impact fee is paid at the time of the building permit, or they can ask for an extension to kind of delay that if they are receiving waivers, is what we call them now, at, at the time of building occupancy. And so the way the regional road impact fee system works is, like I said earlier, it's based on vehicle miles traveled, and then there's a set dollar value per vehicle mile traveled that a certain type of building would trigger. The credit system that you're talking about is kind of the older system. So before the, as we've gone through and the, the RIF system has evolved over time, it goes through iterations and we call them additions. And they follow, each addition follows an update to the RTP. So right now, we're on the seventh edition of the regional road impact fee program. Projects can apply for waivers, which would be essentially if the project is constructing improvements that would be on that CIP list, which is the Capital Improvement Plan, that is a subset of the projects that are listed in the RTP. And all those projects that are listed in the RTP would be essentially triggered or moved forward based on a development. So a good example maybe is, you know, something north of the Steady Airport that we're not going to go out of our way to go build a new road to nowhere, but if a development came in, that would be a regional road potentially that would generate traffic and provide regional, you know, those things. And so...
So they don't have to contribute then if they do a road or something?
Correct. If, if they apply for it and we agree that that proposed improvement is on that seat, part of the plan, they can develop a waiver that would offset their payment into the RIF fee system at the time of building permit and construct those improvements on behalf of the RTC essentially, and then receive a waiver for that that would offset some of that. They cannot exceed what that RIF fee would be with those improvements. So if it's a million-dollar improvement and they would only be paying a half million dollars of RIF fees, they're only eligible for that maximum amount that they would be owed. The old system is a credit system that didn't have that cap in the sense that they could, the developer could build a road at some higher dollar value and collect lots of credits that then they could use for offsetting their RIF fee when they go deal more projects. We also, the, the system also allowed the transfer of those credits, and this is kind of where you get into the 50% comment that you had. And so the RIF General Administrative Manual is what we call it, the seventh edition of that is, does allow the transfer of credits to third parties, but those credits can only be used at a 50% value of that RIF, that total fee due. So if a development had a, a RIF fee that was associated with like seven, you know, 20 BMTs or something like that, they could only apply credits up to 10 BMTs, and then they would have to pay the other amount as part of a, of a fee amount to the city. There's a lot of details to it, and I'm happy to answer more, but...
That's good, thank you, that's really helpful. That helps me understand, especially that it's changed since the credit system, so thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate you coming here. This is something that we've been thinking about a lot, so I appreciate you all coming out tonight.
Yeah, we're happy to be here, and so thank you for asking us. Thanks.
Okay, we'll now move to agenda item number six, which is public hearings. Start with 6.1, case number LDC 23-00038, the smog place. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Hello, thank you. My name is Joshua Cook. Very nervous. My name is Joshua Cook. I've lived here my whole life in the Reno Sparks area. I've been a smog technician for the last 20 years. I've decided to go into business for myself. I'm currently leasing a space at 809 West Fourth Street. And I, with your guys' permission, I'm seeking a conditional use permit. Above, we have a slide of the area. Can I zoom in on that? That's our lot right there, right, Fourth Vine. Yes, we're off of, Fourth and Vine, off of Keystone, in the Keystone area. Man, sorry.
Yeah, so what this slide's currently showing is the surrounding areas. This parcel is currently zoned MD, MWQ, and all the rest of the parcels are similarly zoned. Next slide. You guys aren't familiar with the assessor's parcel plan. This is the Google Earth image of the parcel itself. This is Sportsman's Corner, if you guys are familiar with that. Josh said this is on Fourth and Vine. Next slide. Oh, perfect, thank you.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Alex Malm. Arrow keys on the keyboard. Here's a little bit more of a blown-out version of the area, just kind of showing the businesses surrounding the future smog places. Currently, this parcel of Sportsman's Corner only has one tenant, it's a Domino's Pizza. Everything else, it's completely abandoned. So we see that we've got McDonald's, Jack in the Box, Chevron, O'Reilly, Title Max, KFC, and a...
Foster's Automotive.
Foster's Automotive is, is also there, and then a, a pawn broker. The space that we're currently leasing right now is 1,450 square feet. We will not be seeking a building permit. The space is currently adequate for what we are utilizing it for. We see here, there'll be two spaces dedicated for the smog testing itself. This is just a 1G testing facility, this is not a 2G, so it's just testing only, no repairs whatsoever. There is a small retail component that Josh would like to establish here in the front while people wait for their cars are smogged. I'm sure you guys are all familiar, it takes probably a maximum of 10 minutes to smog your car. If it's even older, it's probably 12 or 13 minutes, something like that. Here's some photos that we've taken of the space. Currently, the two spaces up here on the left-hand side are the dedicated smog stalls that we'd like to utilize. Here's from Vine Street, I believe, looking at our front door. There's a small landscaped area here in the corner of the Sportsman's Facility, our front door. And then here's, again, from Vine Street as well, with it showing the Domino's, which is the only other tenant currently in the building. This is on the other side, on Fourth Street. Fourth Street, perfect. Again, just our front door, if you guys aren't familiar with the, the building itself. And that's all we have. Is there any questions at this time?
Not at this time, but we might call you up for questions in the future.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carter, do we have a presentation tonight?
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Carter Williams, Assistant Planner, for the record. And before you is a request for a conditional use permit for a emissions testing business. Under the code, it's classified as an auto service and repair business, and that's why it's before you today. The property is located at the corner of Vine and Fourth Street. It is located within the mixed-use downtown Northwest Quin Quadrant zoning district, and it carries the master plan land use designation of downtown mixed-use. So the conditional use permit, there's two, two elements to this. It's within the downtown districts or the specific district, it's, it's required from, or it's only allowed with a conditional use permit, but it also has to be within a quarter mile of a freeway on ramp, on or off ramp. And this, this might site meets that criteria. It is a one, it is located within the smaller suite within a larger 1.52-acre shopping center. Key issues analyzed in the staff report are compatibility with surrounding uses. Generally, there's a mix of uses within the direct vicinity of the site, including commercial, office, and entertainment uses. There is a duplex to the north, but it's, I mean, it's, it's blocked from view, from the, the business operations, from the existing building wall of the center. The hours of operations are limited for outdoor operations, and generally, they're, they're limiting their hours from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There's no anticipated impacts to surrounding uses with these considerations. So the applicant is proposing a retail component with this operation, and it, that maintains that retail active, like that activity generating use with the tenant space while also providing a service use, which is encouraged in the MD and WQ zoning district. Two parking spaces are to be utilized for emissions testing. There are no parking requirements in the downtown districts, but there is parking on-site quite a bit. Here are some of the views that were provided from the applicant of the tenant space. Like they said, that they're not proposing any tenant improvements, so there's no triggers for additional landscaping at this time. So a business license is all that would be required to establish the business if this is approved. Before you are the findings for a conditional use permit. Through staff's review and analysis, we've, we were able to meet all the findings. And on the screen is the recommended motion. That concludes my presentation, but I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you. We'll come back to the commission for disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson, I received and read an email, and I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Villanueva, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Dragic, read and received emails and familiar with the site.
Commissioner Armstrong, same disclosures?
Commissioner Munoz, same disclosures.
Commissioner Gower, same disclosures.
Mr. Velto, same disclosures. We'll now move to public comment, open up public comment on this item. Do we have any request to speak forms?
I did not receive any request to speak forms. We did not receive any voicemails. Correspondence was received and was forwarded to the planning commission. And I don't believe we have anybody on Zoom to make public comment either.
Okay, would anyone in the public like to speak on this item? Seeing done, we'll close public comment, come back to the commission for questions, comments, or motions. Commissioner Munoz?
Thank you, I'll start. Carter, it's for you. With a conditional use permit, and the applicant stated that this was just going to be for smog testing only, not repair. If we grant a conditional use permit, is there any chance that they could use that to do repairs there? Or is, is that a possibility?
A condition was implemented, or is proposed with this application, or with the staff report to limit it just to emissions testing. So there is no ability for them to do more than emissions testing at this location.
Perfect, that's all I needed, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
In case number LDC 23-00038, the smog place, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit subject to conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second. Race right there, we have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you and good luck with the smog place.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to agenda item 6.2, which is case number LDC 23-00035, Green Acres Storage. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Yes, they're, I believe, are available on Zoom. We're just moving them into the meeting, so hang on just one second. Russell, can you hear us? Russell, can you hear us? You're on mute.
How about now?
Yes, we can hear you.
We'll start over, sorry.
Are you ready to present?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and state your name for the record, and the clock will start. You have 15 minutes to do your presentation.
My name is Russell Myers. I'm the Design Professional Record, representing the project, property owner for this project, Green Acres Storage. The, the owner also owns and operates the existing storage facility directly across the street from this site. His intentions under the same management is to expand his self-storage amenities, providing a valuable resource for the community, is consistent with the minimally intrusive design characteristics of their existing facility. The challenges of this site are rather profound, uncharacteristically challenging, being extremely narrow and deep. To provide internal circulation through approximately 70-foot wide, 1,131-foot-deep site, working with the city fire department, required a 26-foot fire lane, hammerhead, and a minimum of six fire hydrants. This resulted in impacting the buildable area, requiring approximately 28,000 square feet of the 80,000. The MS zone requirements of 20%, basically requiring 16,000 square feet added to the challenges of defining and establishing a potential building sites. To be consistent with the existing facility across the street, the intent was to, or is, to be consistent and develop low-rise, one-story, smaller-scale building elements interspersed within the site, being minimally intrusive. We provided site perimeter landscaping, furthering the natural screening of the buildings and being environmentally... furthering, uh, the natural screening of the buildings and being environmentally sensitive. We plan to articulate the frontage with various architectural and landscape elements that comply with the MS zone requirements. We're requesting that the, um, alternate equivalent landscaping requirement of sixteen thousand seventy-six square feet be reduced to approximately ninety-one point nine percent of that at approximately fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven square feet. We're accomplishing this by not just the perimeter screening around the northeast and southern property lines, but along the western property line, abutting the end dot easement, using a, uh, six-foot-high, uh, vertical landscape screening element. That, um, pretty much defines what we're doing. If you want, you can, uh, go to the next slide. And, well, from, from the first slide, you see the extent of how we have to physically access the depth of this site to provide, um, a required complying fire response. It's a twenty-six-foot-wide fire lane, and the, um, hammerhead is required to be able to turn and negotiate back out, which is on the tail end, if you go to the next slide. We've actually provided additional negotiating space in that hammerhead area for response and staging. And, uh, if you go to the next slide, this represents the, um, building elements. There are seven building elements, six rather similar. The, the shed are the smaller units, and the ridge is the larger deep unit in the back. The frontage is the first two elevations, where the street frontage shows the storage building with the, uh, block wall that will be treated with architectural and artistic elements, and the access gate. You can see some of the screening of the landscaping somewhat diffuse in the elevation. The, uh, second elevation, number four, is once you're within the site, that's the storage building and the restroom accommodations. But basically, uh, we're trying to keep it as minimally intrusive. I have additional pictures that, uh, there of, of the site. This is accessing, uh, at, at the terminus of Green Acres, where the butts the freeway. And the site's on the left. You can see the site and how deep it goes, pretty much all the way down to where that billboard sign is, not to it, but close. So, it's extremely deep. And you can see, uh, the end dot easement on, uh, on the west side, and, um, the auto dealership and its landscape screening on, on the east side. I think the next few pictures are from, yeah, that's the existing, um, uh, storage facility that we're gonna be, um, uh, being consistent with. But we're, you know, we're only going one story high. We won't have a two-story element. What you're seeing there is the office building that will serve both sites. And, uh, if you go to the next slide, this, you, you see the aerial. It kind of gives you a little better sense of how deep and narrow this site is, and the existing storage facility to the north. The next slide shows and gives a little bit of perspective. This, the intent, um, the freeway is somewhat elevated. It's banked up from both sides. And, uh, you see the residential area to the west. Most of those homes, um, back up to the freeway. And there's only one street there, I think it is, which is the last slide. Or that, yeah, not that, that's looking south. There's, there's, yeah, that's from the freeway. So, you could see the site on the right. And where that existing chain-link fence is in front of those storage, temporary storage units, that's gonna be the green wall. And for the most part, that's six feet, where what you're gonna see predominantly of the site from either the freeway, or if you can even, from the other side, yeah, there you go. You'll see the roof line of the receding shed roofs and the receding ridge roof of our buildings, which will fall well below, um, the, uh, existing, uh, two-story office building on the existing site. That's the only street that, uh, that's the terminus of, uh, Siler Court. And you can see above the freeway, um, sound wall, pretty much to the center, just to the left of the bus, the second-story office building. So, that gives you kind of a little perspective that our one-story buildings, for the most part, are not gonna be very visible, if at all, um, from this side of the freeway, and probably diminished by the green wall of our, um, end dot, uh, vertical landscape wall from the freeway. So, it, it won't be much of a distraction. That pretty much concludes my presentation. And any comments or questions?
Uh, thank you for your presentation. We may have comments or questions, but after the city presents, we'll, uh, come back to you if we do.
Okay, I'm here.
Thank you. Carter, do we have a presentation?
Yes.
Great.
All right, hello again, Commissioners. Carter Williams, Assistant Planner for the Record. So, um, th- this presentation is for, um, this, presenting staff's analysis of a conditional use permit for a mini warehouse facility, as well as an alternative equivalent compliance application for landscaping requirements and wall articulation requirements. The property is located within Ward Two, south at the end of Green Acres Drive, running along, abutting the, uh, the I-580 freeway. It is located within the mixed-use suburban, uh, zone, and has the master plan land use designation of suburban mixed-use. The property is about 1.85 acres. Key issues analyzed in the staff report are primarily compatibility with surrounding uses and site design. Although not, um, directly identified as a key issue within the staff report, it was analyzed, the floodplain and drainage was, was analyzed, because there is a portion of the site within the floodplain. So, to the north, as the applicant stated, there is an existing self-storage facility that is operated by the, by the same, same applicant. To the northeast is a shopping center. To the east is the Dolan Lexus Auto Sales Facility. To the south is what appears to be the operations associated with ranching activities. And, and, uh, to the east across the freeway is residentially-sown property. The self-storage is a kind of a non- or low-activity generating use seems appropriate in this location because of its, well, its location generally, its narrowness, um, and its, um, access from Green Acres. It's not a very friend, it's not a very friendly site for pedestrian-oriented uses. With existing commercial activity in the area, it is not anticipated that the proposed use will have many negative impacts, if, if any. And it's, it is recognized, however, that the freeway frontage is the most impactful view of, of this development. So, a part of the alternative equivalent compliance application or, um, request is to provide screening in lieu of that standard landscaping requirement. Excuse me. Yeah. So, the standard landscaping requirement is twenty percent within the MS zone. Due to the exceptional narrowness of the site and the required expanded, uh, fire access lane, that's, that's due to the, the length of the site, the applicant is requesting a reduction in the required landscaping, and instead construct a living landscape, living landscape fence between the freeway and the proposed project. The applicant's plans do not have landscaping, other than the living landscape fence adjacent to the freeway, but staff is recommending a condition, condition to prioritize landscaping and provide additional screening through the planting of evergreen trees along the, the freeway frontage. To get, add greater interest and prove, um, improve long-term success of the living landscape fence, there's a condition that staff recommends to provide trellis structures along the, uh, along the fence line. That, and then a maintenance manual is, will also be required by condition to ensure the, the life of, uh, the, the life of the living landscape fence for the, um, life of the project. Moving on, oh, and sorry, this is the examples of the living landscape fence that were, was provided for, uh, from the applicant. Moving on to the wall articulation requirements for the zone, this is the elevation view from Green Acres Drive. A mixed-use zone requires five distinct, uh, wall articulation design elements to be provided for, for buildings facing, um, facing, uh, primary street frontages. They're able to meet actually four of the five with utilizing that, that, that brick wall, which isn't, isn't normal, so that's a part of this request. We would normally just isolate it to the building, but because of the exceptional, the exceptional narrowness of the site, again, it's, it was difficult for the applicant to fit all those elements onto the building face. In lieu of the fifth condition, or fifth, um, wall articulation requirement, staff is recommending a condition to provide additional pedestrian amenities within the, the area between the building and Green Acres Drive. The site will still maintain a mix of building heights, which is required, um, within the MS zone, as well as maintaining all, um, other wall articulation, articulation requirements on every other elevation. This is a close-up of the site, um, along Green Acres Drive. There is additional landscaping that they're proposing in that area as well, which will, I think, aid in, um, support, helped, um, staff support a, uh, an alternative equivalent compliance in this case. So, regarding the, uh, the flood zone and drainage, the property has a FEMA Zone A hazard area to the south of the site. The proposed site plan does have two buildings placed within the zone, and staff has recommended a condition that a flood study and updated hydrology study be provided prior to any site improvement permit, approval, demonstrating that buildings will not be built within the floodplain, and any, uh, mitigation measures, measures will not increase adverse impacts to properties surrounding the site with the development of the project. The site as presented is probably the most intense this development can be, but it changes based on that flood study, could result in, um, changes to the site plan, including the removal of buildings potentially. We don't know, we don't have that, that, that study available at this time. But it will be a requirement prior to building permit, which was the same, if a, a building that didn't require, or sorry, a development that didn't require an entitlement that went straight to building permit, it would have been the same process. Before you on the screen is the findings for a conditional use permit, as well as the findings for an alternative equivalent compliance, through staff's review and analysis with the, um, proposed conditions. We find that, that this project meets all the findings. And before you is the recommended motion. I'm available for any questions, but that concludes my presentation.
Okay, we'll come back to the Commission for Disclosures. I will start with Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower, familiar with the site.
Commissioner Munoz, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Armstrong, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Dracula, I've read and received emails.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Johnson, uh, received and read emails and familiar with the site.
Mr. Velto, familiar with the site? We'll now open up public comment. Do we have any request to speak forms?
I did not receive any request to speak forms for this item. Correspondence was received, that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and has been entered as part of the record. No, uh, wait, we did receive one voicemail. Do you want to transition into that right now, or do you want to do that after?
Uh, we'll see that after public comment, if we have anyone in the public that would like to speak.
Sir, you need to fill out a request to speak form after you, you can do it after you speak. We don't have electronic. If you could.
Please come to the podium, sir, and just state your name for the record.
My name is, uh, Tony May, and I'm, uh, the attorney for David and Judith Trust. They're an adjacent property owner. I don't know if, does this work?
Hang on, just one second, we'll get it for you.
All right. So, there's multiple issues that we believe caused really, uh, big problems to my client. My client is actually the owner of the property right in this area here. So, basically, there's, one is that they have a big problem with the drainage issue. This is a really big, bad flood area. We just saw the photo where the, where the FEMA zone goes into the property and around. I'll, I'll show you in, in just a bit. They've, they've maximized and ran the property, all the buildings, right to the very, very edge of the property. And, um, it's my understanding that if, if it's in the FEMA zone, they have to raise part of it up, because there's a low part. That's gonna push more water, uh, you know, away, which could cause the water to actually go up, uh, with, with regard to the other landowners. There's, there's no, they have no access, um, or no, they don't own any ownership rights to the, the, any part of the, the drainage ditch that goes through the, through, through the wash. So, if there's a problem, they have no rights to go in and fix anything unless they get some kind of an agreement with an adjacent property owner. My client has, uh, the rights to maintain part of it that affects their property. They've already had that, and, and they actually go and, and they maintain the property, but they have to kind of dig out to make sure when the water comes through under the culverts, it, it's going from fast to slow, which causes the water to, to jump up. And that's why it floods in the area, and they've actually had floods that have gone up onto their property, and, you know, close to the house. If they mess with anything downstream by filling it in and causing the, the, causing it to go up, then we have the problem with, um, with their property. We have a problem with the line of sight, um, in the very, very back, if you can see. In the very, very back, you can see in the, they've gone right, right to the edge of the property, and that's the biggest part of the whole, of, of all the developments. Right behind that is my client's sign. They've had a sign there since 2002, and we're, we're worried that they're gonna come in and block access or block view of that sign. That sign is, um, an integral part of their property, um, which is now landlocked. By allowing this to go through and adding, um, the buildings where they are, my client has no access to their parcel. When, when they came through and end dot came through and built the freeway, a little tiny triangle piece of the property was, was left on the other side of the, of the drainage easement, of the drainage ditch. And the only way my clients have been able to access it over the last twenty-plus years is through this parcel. And so now, basically, my client has no access, and you see they ran it right to the, right to the property line. We also have, um,
Excuse me, sir, that's three minutes.
Can you just give me, like, just two quick ones, I'll be really fast?
We can't, I apologize. We have to keep it the same for everybody. Great, thank you. Would anyone else in the public like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, Michelle, do we have a voicemail?
Yes, we do, we'll transition into that right now.
Oh, my. After the voicemail. That's okay. Yes, if you'd like to, if you could. Yes, if you'd like to, if you could.
Thank you, this is Clay Alder regarding a property I own, parcel number 04320115. I had a notice that there's going to be a staff review for a 1.85 acre parcel located south of the terminus of Green Acres Drive, but it doesn't give an APN number or a physical address, and I am somewhat surprised that that is not on there. So if someone could call me with the exact location of this 1.8 acre project, I will see how close that is to a property I own there and see if I have any issues. Hopefully, someone can do that. My email address is C Alder, C for Clay, then Alder, A-L-D-E-R, at DixonRealty.com. Dixon Realty, D-I-C-K-S-O-N, Realty, R-E-A-L-T-Y.com. My phone number, 775-745-5708. Thank you so much. And I'm going to look on your little notice we got to see if I missed something, and there actually is an address. They want to build 310 mini warehouse units. But again, I don't see anything that gives me the address of where that's going to be. Thank you so much, appreciate your understanding.
Great, sir, if you're, would you like to speak?
Sure.
Like to hear from you?
Hi, my name is Craig Olson, and I am the managing member of Green Acres Storage Partners. We've owned that property since 2008. I've been in the storage business for 50 years. We're seeking to add on to the property by building out this section that you've seen there. The issues that this other gentleman has brought up just came to our attention, really in the last day or so, with comments. As far as drainage and flood zone, I was out there today with David Hagan, who is our civil engineer, and he could better explain the stuff. He's a civil engineer, I'm not, but certainly any issues that have to do with the flood zone and drainage and whatnot, we certainly plan to deal with as is appropriate. As far as access to a property that they own, I can tell you that over the last four and a half, five years, since I started the process of attempting to buy this property from NDOT, who is not the easiest to deal with, that I have spoken to the owner, and the owner was not in opposition with the project when I first mentioned it, nor did he mention any access issues. Certainly, if it had brought to my attention a long time ago, probably wouldn't be an issue today. I have spoken with this other gentleman, and we've agreed to go ahead and talk further to see if we can solve some of the issues they've brought up. But overall, I think it's a well-designed project. I think it adds value to the community and a service that is sorely needed, and certainly we have no intention of harming anyone else, property owner. In regards to the access issue, I spoke with Tom Dolan of Dolan Lexus yesterday, and Tom informed me that when he bought his property, there is an easement agreement that he has on it that allows them to get back to that billboard, so I don't believe that is an issue. Again, I brought up with these gentlemen, and that's something that we're all going to be talking to Mr. Dolan back when he gets back in town to provide that document, but I don't see that there is an issue there at all. But certainly, I'm willing to work with anyone. We think it will be a good project, and we think it's going to look good and be pretty well screened from the freeway. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Michelle?
I don't have any more requests to speak forms.
Great, thank you. We'll come back to, we'll close public comment and come back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Munoz?
Thank you, Commissioner Munoz, for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carter, do you have any information on the easement for the sign? Because it does look, just from aerial views or what I'm looking at, it does look like that gets landlocked, or it does get blocked in if there's buildings put up to the edge on the south side of the proposed property. Do we know what the easement is for the sign or that triangle that's left of land right there where the billboard is?
No, we do not. And from our perspective, we're looking, I mean, we view this as a civil issue, that it's something that needs to be worked out between the property owners and even NDOT. We did not view it, well, it came late to us, first of all, but then also, we would still maintain that's a civil issue, that wouldn't be part of our analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question about the comments that we received regarding the displacement of floodwaters. Carter, if you want to address that, or maybe Mike does. How does staff look at that? I mean, you mentioned the need for the analysis subsequent to this, looking at the flood zone. Does that address the concern that the gentleman brought up during public comment about the displacement of water if this property is raised up?
Yes, so we wouldn't allow for that flood area to be expanded. And I probably can, more technical questions beyond that probably would be good for Mike and Michelle to step and discuss, or even the applicant's professional engineer. But that's the goal, or not just the goal, that it's a code requirement, that we're not further inundating properties with the rise of buildings out of the floodplain.
Okay, I mean, I'm really looking for that assurance that we're not going to have a development that creates that scenario, and we have measures in place that would avoid that scenario.
Yeah, we established it through condition, and it's a requirement from a code perspective as well.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up on a unrelated question? The landscaping requirement, so the storage facility to the north has trees along the frontage of the freeway, it has a chain link fence. This project is essentially going to result in the same outcome, right? Because we're going to have the space trees, we're going to have the chain link fence, but then we're going to have the added living wall component or the living fence component? So it'll have a similar outcome, but potentially even better because it has that living wall? Is that a fair assessment of the proposed view from the freeway?
Yes, that is staff's perspective, and I believe that that entitlement originally had a similar condition for screening along the frontage. The living landscape wall does serve also to capture the landscaping that isn't going to be, isn't going to be installed in a traditional manner on the ground. We're not going to be meeting the ground. I think it's like 53% of the site actually ends up being landscaped with ground landscaping, and then we capture that vertical element to make up most of the area, if not all, with that five-foot landscape strip.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Munova?
Question for, for Carter, I believe, maybe the applicant. So, does the city, or does staff know whether an easement currently exists? I understand it's a civil issue, I actually agree, I do think it is a civil issue, but do you know if there's an easement currently that exists to get there, or is it just they've been using this space to get to where they need to go?
Staff is not aware of any easement.
Any easement, okay.
And it's our awareness, not that one does or does not exist.
Okay, and so, actually, I have a question for the, who's the applicant? Or, do you have a rep? I can ask you if you, your rep may know.
This would be something, because I've been the one more involved in this. As I mentioned earlier, I spoke with Tom Dolan, who owns Dolan Lexus, and in talking to him, he told me that he has an easement that was drawn up about a year before he bought his property, that allows access to go back to that billboard. This is what he told me yesterday afternoon. And he told me he will be back in town in a few days. In talking to these gentlemen earlier today, I told them that I would assist in getting that document, or a copy of that document, from Mr. Dolan and/or going through First American Title, who handled our escrow on the purchase of the property, and getting a copy, because certainly, an easement is typically recorded.
How long have you owned this property? Because you bought it from NDOT, and when did that happen?
I bought from NDOT, I believe it was July 7th or 8th of 2021.
Okay, so very recently, so it's not unlikely that they've been using this as a way to get to their lot, but that doesn't necessarily mean they were entitled to use it for such a reason. But, okay, great, thank you. No further questions.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, I have a question, but it's more from the design standpoint on the building, so I don't know if you want to handle that, or if you want to...
I'll leave it up to my professionals.
Okay, thank you. So, the presentation that we had did have some elevations in it, which we don't have as a part of our packet. So, one of the questions that came up this evening, or comments that came up this evening, was about that unit seven at the south side of the site, and I couldn't tell from the elevation, understanding which was the low and which was the high side. It looked like the low side was internal to the site and high was on the back. So I'm wondering if you can tell me if, one, if that was the correct guess from what I was looking at on the screen, and if so, what the height is of the back of the building. I think that's for Russell, who's on mute.
Russell, you're on mute.
Yes, actually, that building number seven is a ridge building. Its maximum height is 22 feet, seven inches, which is actually lower than the six shed roofed buildings, one through six. There is an elevation in my package, elevation one and section two, as well as elevation three, which is at the side. The low end of the eve is approximately 12 foot, one inches high, and the ridge is, like I said, 22 feet, seven inches, there you go, under one. That's looking at an elevation of it looking to the south.
Okay, so that's, I'm understanding now, so the four bay structure, the gable roof is the one in the top, and you're telling me that ridge is at 22 feet?
Seven, plus or minus, yes.
And then, so then the shed roofs on the others, the high side is facing east towards the car dealership, is that correct?
Correct, that's at 26 foot, seven inches.
Okay, thank you, I just, this drawing was not in our packet, so that was why I was posing the question, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Munoz?
Guess I'll start again, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking at this, with the recommendations the city put in and what code requires, I don't have any problems with the flood, I don't have any issues with it whatsoever. I think it's a great use of area. That's a difficult spot to develop. I mean, hands down, that's, there's not a lot you can put there, so I think they did a good job doing that. I commend staff for the work that they did, and I have zero issues with this.
Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would just say that I appreciate the public comments that were made. I do feel that staff addressed those comments in the concerns and the process of evaluating the site. So I am comfortable being able to make that finding, and, you know, in terms of the easement, I guess that feels just a little bit outside of our purview here and the decision that we have to make tonight, and I hope that it's able to be resolved. So, just wanted to put that on record, and I am ready to make a motion when you're ready to accept one, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
In the, thank you, I want to get there. The case number LDC 23-00035, Green Acres Storage, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit and alternative equivalent compliance subject to conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Commissioner Draculich, I second.
Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you, good luck with your project.
Can you read the appeal process into the record, please?
Yes, and just for those interested, any final action not including recommendation or failure to take action by the planning commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal, together with fees, must be filed with the city clerk within 10 business days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. That appeal process is listed within the staff report, which can be found on the website through the Prime Gov portal, or wherever the staff report or the agenda has been posted. That will move on to agenda number seven, Planning Commission Training. Jason?
Hello, and good evening, commissioners. Jason Garcia Labou, Planning Manager for the record. Tonight, I wanted to bring a quick discussion and training on annexations. So I've put together some slides to kind of walk through the general basics, and hopefully answer some questions and have a little discussion after the presentation. So just to give a quick overview of what I'm going to talk about tonight, I wanted to run down some terminology and definitions very briefly. These are terms and topics that have come up at some of our prior meetings, as well as some of the prior reviews on some of the projects, so this is just going through and explaining some of the terminology. Then I wanted to touch briefly on the annexation program for the city, and then also the processing of annexation applications when the city receives a request. And then, the what's next part is really room for conversation and discussion among your commission. So as far as kind of terminology, what an annexation is, and I know many of you on this commission know this, but for our members in the public, really, it's the bringing of land into the city. So it's a process, there's two primarily, two primary ways to do that. One is a voluntary annexation, and that's typically when there's contiguous land to the city, and that's usually the applications that the city sees. The second is city-initiated annexations, and I'll get a little bit into the annexation program, but that deals more along the lines of that. The second term is sphere of influence. I think most of you on this commission have heard this before. This really deals with what we call a growth horizon. Typically, it's 20 years, it's the areas adjacent to the city, which the city will, it's a planned expansion, and that's typically in coordination with both local and regional plan. Under Nevada Revised Statute, there's actually a process which I'll lay out, but there's approval of that process to designate that mapping area, which we call that sphere of influence. And essentially, saying it short, it's where Reno will grow. So that's why I put that on that slide for you, so plain and simple for our members of the public out there. I touched briefly on the annexation program. Essentially, I can sum that up as goals and policy document, process, what we look for, kind of the ins and outs of those city program planned annexations. In that, it specifically has specific things that we look for with those applications regarding location, extension of services, need for expansion, compatibility with the community, and such and such. As far as kind of the process for that annexation program, that is approved by the council, and then it's certified by the Regional Planning Commission. And then the last term is city limits, and that's the physical boundary between the city and unincorporated area of the county. and unincorporated area of the county. So, the annexation program, what's in it? So, typically, there's maps, fun maps. So, I'm a geographer, I love maps, but Sphere of Influence is that map there, and it shows kind of that growth horizon, that area that's adjacent to city. It also contains those goals and processes. Typically, it's a tool for services, infrastructure, and the city and applicants look at it, as well as our regional planning agencies. As far as the program update, that expired in 2017, and it has been included with council priorities. That's really focused on the city-sponsored annexation applications, and to date, I think the last one was in 2011. But it should be noted that that program is also a tool, when we receive annexation applications, we do look at the material in there. So, it still has, very much has a purpose. So, to walk through our annexation applications, typically, we receive an application, and that goes through our, what we call DRM, and that's our Development Review Memo. That's that email blast of new applications that comes out when the city receives it. With annexations, under our current code, they go directly to city council for review. So, under our code, I'm going to jump around a little bit on my PowerPoint slide here, but under our Title 18, it actually spells out the procedures, and typically, we have a master plan or zoning application that accompanies an annexation application. And our code requires that those be reviewed together. So, I think that's come up as a point of conversation in prior discussion, but that's why we group those together, and it's a little funky in the process because those master plan and zoning applications come before the Planning Commission first, before they go to council, whereas annexation applications go directly to council. So, that's where you see a little bit of the disconnect on that. I put project-specific for the role of the regional planning agency, and that's really just because it depends on what projects come through the pipeline and the components of that. There's all different reasons that they can be reviewed at the regional level. Typically, sometimes there's triggers, depending on the type of project, with specifics due to infrastructure, or number of units, or population, or other things, to what we call projects of regional significance that can trigger that. Sometimes, there's tier reviews. Sometimes, there's other reasons that it has to go to the regional level, and that typically accompanies those master plan applications or larger projects. So, sometimes that role of the regional planning agency comes in there. When I put this on this, this is specific to the annexation application process. I don't want that confused with what I just talked about with the annexation program. So, then, development applications, as I said, it's specifically laid out in Title 18. It gives both a process, what we're supposed to look for, and those, similar to many of our other applications, those findings that we have to make. So, that's just a brief overview. If there's any questions for me or discussion that you'd like to bring up, I leave it to the commission, but hopefully, that's some updates on terms and other things for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, start with Commissioner Armstrong.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Jason, for the presentation. As a new commissioner, it's really helpful. I know it's an important topic for us to consider. My question is related to the process you outlined with Reno Municipal Code and annexation. So, how long has that been the case, and why is it structured that way? Because my understanding is that when it's come before the commission, some of the issues are, we're basically making recommendations or approvals for something that could technically not happen because the annexation gets approved by the city council, and it's basically a disjointed process. Why is that?
So, to answer the first part of your question, the code update really kind of solidified that new process, as far as specifics with, or the more recent specifics with the way that we process our applications. And it breaks it down by type of application, so, anything from a conditional use permit to a master plan to an annexation. But to separate that out, with annexation applications, there's kind of a different, there's different things that we, as staff, look at, view, and evaluate, and there's, at the council level, components of that, such as fiscal or infrastructure or other things that are determined. And so, it's a kind of a different view or a different lens that they look at for some of those things. A lot of times, at this commission, it's more of a land use jurisdiction approval and Title 18 aspect. So, it's a little bit of a different, not only view, but duties. So, that's where, I guess I'm saying that it's really more of a council, because of the different components like finance and other things, council function for annexations. So, that being said, I know that historically, at one point, I believe, the Planning Commission did have almost similar to the master plan or zoning process, kind of a recommendation type of ability to the council. So, but under the current code, it's pretty specific, and it bundles that package together. So, there is that disconnect. So, hopefully, I answered your question there?
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate staff for bringing this item to present tonight. I think it's informative, and, you know, we've seen a couple items in the past where we've had a, you mentioned the, kind of bundling creates a disjointed issue. You know, I think the, there is a solution here, and it is as simple as adding the Planning Commission to the review process for the annexation of a 670 NRS, I forget the front end, but the 670 annexation, a voluntary annexation, where the Planning Commission essentially weighs in on the merits of the annexation decision in conjunction with the master plan amendment and the zone change. And I'm looking at the code right now of staff's review considerations for an annexation, and it includes things like the logical extension or boundaries of city limits, need for expansion to accommodate planned regional growth, location of existing and planned water sewer service, the efficient provision of service areas and capital facilities. I mean, there's a fiscal component to it, but all of those things that I just mentioned are essentially the same findings that we make for master plan amendment, zone changes, and tentative maps. So, it really doesn't feel like an extension, or an overreach, or anything like that. It just seems like a logical step in the process to have the Planning Commission weigh in on those components, especially if it's bundled anyway. I mean, like that one that we saw recently above UNR, we saw the master plan amendment request and the zone change. The trouble was that the annexation wasn't happening until the subsequent city council meeting the next day, so we didn't know if council was going to approve the annexation, and we were having to make a decision on the land use decision and the zone change. So, if it was bundled together, we provide our recommendation as one package for all three of those considerations. Council reviews it, just as they do with the master plan and the zone change. So, it seems like, you know, a logical change to code, and I would really like to see city council consider that, and would, just like them to have staff kind of review, review that as well. So, thanks, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to put those comments on the record.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Draculich, if I can piggyback that, is there any reason why they wouldn't make that change? Commissioner Gower just stated, what's the obstacles, or what would we find out if they didn't want to do it?
Well, I think there's a number of reasons that that was put into place, but one of those is to streamline our city processes and functionality of staff. So, that's something that, of course, could be wrapped into a update of some sort, you know, and we do serve at the direction of council and the commission. So, definitely noted, but, you know, that's, I think, from a staff processing perspective or application perspective, that's where my concerns would be.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Johnson?
Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Definitely echo Commissioner Gower's comments. I do think, to your point, this isn't the first time this request has come from this body. It came during the Title 18 update, and I think, at the time, there wasn't a bundled, to Commissioner Armstrong's question, there wasn't a discussion about the fact that everything came bundled. It was purely about the annexations and Commissioner Gower's comments about those findings and how they aligned with what we were doing. So, it has been requested before, I would certainly support it being requested again, but, you know, I think some of what Jason was talking about, as well as, I think, some of the fiscal aspects were reasons why it wasn't approved. But I do want to ask a question, kind of looking at some of the things that you were talking about, Jason. You know, you talk about how the program for this annexation hasn't really happened since 2017. Even on that slide, there was a seven-year kind of notice about, you know, how frequently the program would be looked at. So, that means that if it expired in 2017, it probably hasn't even been addressed since, like, 2010. I'm wondering, what is the process in looking at the sphere of influence? I mean, if it's been since 2010, since anything's been looked at, and the sphere of influence is intended to be what will become part of the city in 20 years, what's the process or the functionality for when that's even looked at or updated? I mean, there's been a few times where people have come in, and they're under the sphere of influence, and I'm thinking about the residents of Mogal, and some of the issues there, and it became a pretty big deal that it was part of the Reno sphere of influence, but yet, it was in Washoe County, and eventually, they had to go through the whole regional process to come out of the sphere of influence. So, is there a process in place where that's actually evaluated on a, you know, however many year basis, where the sphere of influence is actually analyzed, and the city of Reno looks at all of those fiscal questions and says, you know, we're really not going to move in that area, and maybe that should come out of the sphere of influence? Is there any kind of process or, you know, timeframe for something like that?
Yeah, and just to start out, Title 18 actually addresses the annexation program specifically that with, even though it's expired, that's still, those maps and other things, we still use that. So, just putting that out there. But there is a process in updating that. It would go through the council process as well, up to regional, and that would be the route to update those boundaries. So, that would be, that would have to be initiated process to do that. Independent from that, we have had separate, private applications or applicants go through the process, to go through a process outside of a sphere or something and apply through that process, and that has a separate process, but kind of big picture wise, looking at the complete sphere, that would be probably programmatically done through a program. So, that's really how it was intended to be set up, and that's where, without kind of getting into the details, that's where it would be discussed at, like, a planning level, and then elevated up to, from our local city level up to the regional level. So, that would be council approval and then certification from regional.
And that would be, at least from staff's perspective, that would be something that you would be almost looking at an area with respect to maybe development that's happening adjacent to it in the county, that would be, you know, conflicting with maybe, you know, just from staff's perspective, individually looking at areas that may or may not be appropriate for the sphere of influence. But there's not a process, like we went through with the whole, you know, Title 18 and master plan, where we updated all of the different, you know, zones and everything, there's not an ongoing process where there's an evaluation of this. It's just more on a case-by-case basis or regional level when you're looking at that, but it's not something that we would be anticipating a new mapping coming through saying, hey, we've taken all this out and we've added all this in. There's no situation like that.
At this point in time, we're kind of case-by-case with the applications, so correct, but that can, of course, in the list of priorities, be prioritized to update that, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know there's a lot of list of priorities out there, and I'm not sure I see this coming onto it. I just wanted to understand where that was at. So, thank you for the answers. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Any other? Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. I need to close this. Okay. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number 8, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
There's a meeting next week. Don't know what's on the agenda, hasn't been posted yet.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll turn to Number 9, Staff Announcements.
Jason Garcia-Laboo, Planning Manager for the Record. Just to update the commission, on the March 1st meeting, we will have five items on the agenda. To follow up from my comments on last meeting, we have two appeals that were filed, and those will be on March 8th at the city council. That was an appeal for the Aspire Project, as well as the Riviera Project. And then, on February 8th, the city council appointed Alex Veltow to the Regional Planning Commission. And, kind of fourth on my list, next Thursday, I believe, February 23rd, there will be the Virginia Street Placemaking Study Public Engagement Session. So, those were all the items for staff, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Can you say that date one more time?
February 23rd at 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
And they do have a separate link on the website with kind of information, if anybody in the public or any of the Commissioners are interested.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 10, Commissioner's Suggestions for Future Agenda Items.
Yes, I do. With all the talk about annexation, I would like, in the future, at some point, if it happens, if there is a Washoe County lands bill presented by any of our congressional delegation, I'd like that presented to us, so we can just learn more about any request for disposal of land to the county, as that does implicate potentially, potential annexation in the future.
Piggyback on that, if there are any legislative updates that may affect our job, it might be cool to hear from our, somebody from the city. Okay?
I have one, sorry.
Please, sorry, Commissioner Munoz.
Commissioner Munoz, for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering if it's possible, in the staff reports, is there a way we can get, within the ward of whatever item is before us? I don't know exactly how to word this, but certificates of occupancy that have happened within the last year in the area are project numbers for, I'll use something specific, South Reno, down at South Meadows Park, where the new apartments are going in. If we could have some kind of number of places in the last year that have been approved, or places that are recently got certificates of occupancy, so we know kind of what's coming in, I don't know if that's even possible or something that we could do.
I'll double-check with our building department team on that. I will tell you, for entitlements, we do have that readily available by map on our Development Services website, but I understand you're asking about COOs.
Yeah.
I'll get back to you.
Okay, yeah, just specifically, it's different, as we have projects coming in, with the impacts we have to roads, things like that. I just want to know what additional impacts are going to happen that we may be adding to by approving things that haven't been impacted yet because stuff isn't built out yet? That make sense? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other suggestions? Okay. We'll move on to, we'll open up public comments. Do we have any request-to-speak forums?
I did not receive any request-to-speak forums, no voicemails received. What? Oh, no Zoom, and, no, yeah, that's it.
Okay, great. Seeing no one in the public, we'll close public comments. Is there a motion for a German? Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Oh, no Zoom. And, no, yeah, that's it.
Okay, great. Seeing no one in the public, we'll close public comments. Is there a motion for a German's? There a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Have a nice night.